Over two hours. Recorded yet? Recording? I'll wait to give my good evening. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, both here and online. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. So we have a few items for discussion tonight, principally our joint meeting with the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board and Economic Development Update, and then a second quarter twenty twenty-three financial report. So those of you who may be watching, you can kind of track accordingly. So first, we're going to have our Lakewood Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting members come on up if you can and introduce yourselves, and then we'll go through our work plan together. Your work plan, but we'll go through it together. And welcome. Glenn, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Glenn Space. I'm the current Chair of the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board. Joan Cooley is here on my end. Beth Campbell next to me. Christina Manetti is probably online, but I can't say for sure. And Mark Hayes, I'm not sure if he's online or not. He's a new member, fortunately. So current council liaison is was in last year, Paul Volkey. And this year is Tristan Luricella, if I pronounced that right. Yeah, I've had problems with my name too. So until Jordan Space started winning golf championships. But it's tapered off since the last couple of years. Jessica Olson is our Development Service Manager. Josh Kibitsa is the Associate Planner, and Karen Deveraux is our Administrative Assistant. We meet on the fourth Thursday of every month at six o'clock at the American Lake Room. Our background, the mission of Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board is to preserve, protect, and promote the unique heritage and historic resources of the city of Lakewood. And the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board advises the city, city manager, city staff in conjunction with the protection and preservation historical landmarks in Lakewood and establishing procedures for their designation and preservation of landmarks. As far as accomplishments last year, we spent quite a bit of time editing the Lakewood Touring Map. It was a rather involved process because it takes so much time to get things done now, maybe once a month. So we're at the point where we're expecting a draft out, which I guess we get final approval on, then it goes to print. So this is the first updated version since twenty fifteen. And the one most currently used now is twenty thirteen. So it's it's a rather major update for this thing. The work plan for for the accomplishments. We did finish the touring map. We recruited one new member. And that's not an easy process because there are not a whole lot of people in Lakewood that are historically oriented. Most of the older ones are getting out of date to some extent, including myself. And I think Joan would say the same thing, but and maybe even you. But, you know, we're still always looking. We make, I was hoping we'd get some retreads like Walter Neri Dunkelberger. There may be a few others that hopefully I could convince to come back and do things because they're getting in retirement area. So they got more time to do that. Twenty twenty-three work plan. Quite a bit of detail here. We don't have any specific timelines for our work plan. We look for opportunities to expand Historic Streets Resolution for Recognition Program, and I've got a couple of candidates for that. Both to get signs put up and also for putting it on the next iteration of the Lakewood map. Continue with the working with Clover Park School District to incorporate local history, Lakewood history into the curriculum. That's something I think what we're going to need to do some curriculum items that they can take from there and develop a program around because we obviously are not teachers and we can't, we can't get you know, things that are going to be directly usable for the, but perhaps there's an outline that we can come up with that that helps that. Research grant activities to fund historical markers throughout the city in Lakewood. I've got three candidates for the historical markers for next year. One is the Lakeview Train Station. The Chinese expulsion, which is in the same area, and the Lakeview Post Office. And they're all proving to be a little difficult because it's hard to find pictures, especially of the early dates of things that were happening. I've got lots to text, but I don't have early dates for the for the post office or the or the train station. Train station, I'm sure, came in eighteen seventy-four when the railroad came past Lakeview. That's when the first post office in Lakeview started eighteen seventy-four also. So I think that was a drop-off point for letters and mail and so forth. We're going to update the touring map as historic streets are identified. Work with pretty gritty tours, develop walking tours. That's been kind of difficult because there's no tour that you can easily walk through throughout Lakewood. There'd have to be a number of separate groupings of historic things, probably. Explore the use of community landmark designations for the Colonial Center, Western State Hospital, Roethlisler House, Carmen Villa, Badera, and the Flood House. Flood House is in danger right now. Little Church on the Prairie, Thornwood Castle, Mueller-Harkins Airport Hangar, Tacoma Golf and Country Club, the H Barn, Valero Lanes, House of Donuts, Allen Liddy House, and the Lake Stilicon Dam. Work on recruitment of members, of course, is is an ongoing thing. We actively engage with the city to try and get Lakewood Youth Council involved. This year, I don't know that we had anybody identified, at least so far. Create a short history of Lakewood videos to post online and engage youth and online viewers. That also could be a help with teaching schools or allowing schools to have something to teach their students on. Update the history and historic preservation website to include historic tree designation information and facts. I haven't, I've I've seen the tree preservation material, but how it relates to historic designations and so forth, we're still exploring. In consultation with the Communications Director, develop the relevant historic videos to place on the city's website. And the role of the L-HAB is to designate, preserve, protect, enhance, and perpetuate those sites, buildings, district structures, and objects which reflect significant elements within the cities and states and nation, cultural, aesthetic, social, economic, political, architectural, ethnic. I kind of wish these were a little less winded explanations, but that's all right. I haven't got winded yet. Foster pride and beauty and accomplishments of the past. I've always been a digger myself. I like to find the the past and show it in the museum and the City Hall because there are current displays here in the City Hall. They've been here since the City Hall was put together. Things such as the Bird School displays, the Fort Stilicon relics that we dug up as the sewer went through, and things about the Mueller-Harkins Hangar and the Raceway. So we need to stabilize and improve the economic values and vitality of these landmarks. Right now, the Flood House is in danger because it's for sale and it has a pretty high commercial value, more than the historical value, but we have still yet to see on that what could be done. Protect and enhance the city's tourism tourist industry by promoting heritage-related tourism. At the museum, we found a number of people that have come back to Lakewood who lived here earlier. And they were really interested in seeing what has happened to this area since they left and to look at some of the areas that they were involved with. Provoke and continue incentives for ownership utilization of landmarks. That's always been a difficult one because you got to catch things before they get restored so there can be a tax benefit if and when they are restored. Assist and encourage and provide incentives for public and private orders for preservation, restoration, rehabilitation, and use of landmark buildings, structures, and objects. Assist and encourage and provide technical assistance to public agencies, public and private museums, archives, historic preservation associates, associations, and other organizations involved in preservation, exhibition, protection, and interpretation of Lakewood's heritage. We also need to work cooperatively to identify, evaluate, protect historic resources and the furtherance of purpose, purposes of this chapter. So this must be out of the the manual. Provide a new assignment, designate city historic trees. That's something that we're going to have to study a little bit on and determine what exactly historic tree is. One of my goals, although it's not on this, is to find, locate objects of local interest in the Lakewood History Museum. It's placing them in the museum. And I would like to, at some point in time, get permission from the city to locate and dig local artifacts and place them in the museum. A number of years ago, there was an archaeologist at Fort Stilicon College, Mike Avi. He collected sixty-two boxes, and I assume that's paper record boxes of artifacts, things that were found at Fort Stilicon and around the Lakewood area. When he died some time ago now, the college, we didn't have a museum, otherwise we would have volunteered to to figure out a way to save them and and display them. Anyway, the college went ahead and sent them to the Burke Museum in Seattle. John Simpson helped me in trying to find out where those artifacts were and how we could get some of them for local display because we don't know what they even have. There's no inventory. Could be cannonballs, parts of all kinds of things that have been dug up around Lakewood, Indian artifacts. The museum will rent individual objects out at a hundred dollars an item for a short period exhibit, which we thought wasn't too great because they're just going to sit in a storage area for years and years to come and never be seen by anybody. So that's one thing that I personally would like to concentrate on. Either getting things that have already been found and displayed locally or finding new items where we can because there's history all over the ground in Lakewood and under the ground. On Motor Avenue, when they put the new paving in, they located a horseshoe. Well, that's not really that important to a lot of people, but it was underground for at least a hundred years because that's how long it's been paved. Before that, it was the trolley line. Could have been horse-drawn trolleys, could have been wagon, wagons pulled by horses, could have been just a rider. But this horseshoe was totally encrusted the whole direction with rocks and dirt, and that's on exhibit in the display in the museum. Those are the kinds of things I would like to find. There is probably no treasure, so that's not the object. But to me, that is treasure because it's part of our history. So I think that completes my thought for the day. Any questions?
Sure, Deputy Mayor, and then Mr. Grant.
Thank you for the report. It sounds quite interesting. You guys have been quite busy. I've been asked this question, and I wasn't able to answer it. So I'm asking you, is the Little Church on the Prairie an area that would be designated?
Historic buildings? As far as I'm concerned, they're all a priority, but they're all risky priorities because there isn't the emphasis to try and do what what people can to save them. For instance, one item is, we would like to see the museum and Lakewood Center repurposed. I mean reused as a theater. It's still all there. Needs fix-up. However, city codes have prevented a lot of activities because the electricity isn't the best. It has sprinklers, has some water damage, but we need to find a entity who is interested in showing old films. Even now, the screen, the movie screen that is there has been vandalized by people in the behind the screen, probably homeless that have been through the building through the years. Some some of that time was when we were in there. There's less and less now because pretty well sealed up. However, we're having a rat problem. And we need to solve that pretty soon because it's a messy situation. There are lots of other buildings like the Flood House. Because of the value, there's not much we can do about it. It was considered as possibly a Lakewood museum at one time. So was the vote man aim for the house. Those have all passed through a number of ownerships since we started looking at them. It's hard to tell what we can do to save any of those things. And once they're gone, they're really gone.
But thank you. I didn't have an answer for the people that were asking me that question. So that's why I asked.
Okay. It's on the twenty twenty-three plan to consider.
Yeah, I I think for for buildings like churches, it's a little bit more difficult because property owners are the ones that have to put in the paperwork for designation, and so that would be be for them. I'm not sure about with Little Church, with their affiliation, if the congregation owned the building or if it's the larger church organization that does. I know down the street at the Methodist Church, which is an Allen Little designed building, it's owned by the conference. It's not owned by the congregation. And so the conference would have to be the ones that said, yes, we'd like this to be designated. And I I'm not sure if they would do that or not. And so I don't know what kind of situation Little Church would be in, but it's it's up to the property owner to to do the work to get it designated, but we'd be absolutely delighted to see it.
Now, you said that is the the Flat House is for sale? The one that's for sale?
Is what?
Which one's for sale? The flat?
Yeah, it's four point three million dollars.
And that that house has been moved from its original location, correct?
Yes, it was at the corner of Bridgeport and Pester.
So it's actually a liability to whoever buys it. Is it capable of being moved again?
Don't know. They probably did it with horses. Well, no, they wouldn't have been in the fifties, but they didn't move it very far. And and I figure if if it does get moved, it can't go far because of the wires overhead.
There are people that do that. Do you know if the interior is, has any retained any of its historical significance? Sometimes it's only the shell of the historic building it looks like.
Well, I haven't seen it since the last group came in. However, before that, it was just a house. And there hadn't been that many modern improvements, if any, earlier. So I'm not certain of that.
So yeah, one possibility, just thinking outside the box, is to find a place to put it. And it could be placed in zoning, I'll step on Mr. Bueller's toes here, could be placed in zones other than single-family residential if it wasn't a residence. And it had some other purpose. So if it's a liability to the person who's moving it, maybe they would contribute to moving it. And there are ways to get get things through wires. It's difficult, but it happens. This is a thought. The Burke Museum, when when did those artifacts go to the Burke Museum?
What was that again?
When did the artifacts go to the Burke Museum?
I don't know an exact date. It was after, well, John Simpson was on the on the board. And I requested him what was what was happening with that. And I knew it had gone to the Burke Museum. And it wasn't investigated that we found out whether or not we could rent some of those things back or.
I'm I'm interested in when it actually went because if it came out of Fort Stilicon Park, that it it wasn't the, it wasn't the property of the college to give away. And if it's if it's tribal artifacts, it's the property of the tribe. If they, if they're, if they're cultural artifacts. And so one way to reclaim them from a negotiation standpoint would be to assert ownership as the successor owner of Fort Stilicon Park to what was found on what is now city property and cooperate with the Nisqually Tribe to have them assert ownership over their cultural resources because the museum wouldn't have any rights to them. And have the tribe incorporate that into our interpretive program at Fort Stilicon. So if if you're finding narrow heads or spears or some type of of tribal artifact, I I think we'd have a very strong case to get cooperation with the tribe to pull it back. So.
It's it's all of the artifacts that Mike Avi, who was the archaeology guy at Fort Stilicon College, his kind of lifetime collections and encompassed more than just Fort Stilicon, the surrounding areas, probably some of the beach areas, the Chambers Creek area. And we don't know that. I've never seen an inventory, so I don't know how much stuff is there, whether it was tightly packed or loosely packed.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into with the tribe, especially when we're working at doing some interpretive thing at Fort Stilicon Park.
Another similar situation.
What keeps us from going up?
Helen Helen McGovern's house, which was on Seventy-Fifth Street, was built by Hutlaw, Art Hutlaw. And when they built the house, there was a Indian camp located underneath the foundations. And they found spear points and, you know, Indian artifacts at that time that dated back to seven thousand five hundred years before this time. And those did go to the Burke Museum also. But there again, they go into a set of drawers and if you work for the museum and study certain things, then you've got access. If you don't.
What can we do to help you go up and view it or at least take an inventory or get an inventory? What could we do to help you as a committee take that task? Because we've heard about it now for a few years. So what's the next step to go up and physically look at it, find out what they have, and then, as Mr. Anderson indicated, that could give us maybe the impetus to start a process. But we got to go up and take.
And we've been trying also to work with the Nisqually Tribe, which probably would have been related.
I'm just talking about you've identified an issue. Why don't we encourage the committee somehow, some way to coordinate staff can help to go up and meet with whomever at the Burke Museum and find out what they have?
Yeah, I agree.
I think that would be a good step in the right direction.
Beat my head against the wall.
So you know, it's the definition of frustration, doing the same thing and expecting different results. So this year, let's do something different. Let's actually go up there or coordinate to go up there and find out what they have.
Yeah.
And and when you do that, we we can work. And, and when you do that, we, we can work, we have a strong relationship with the tribe. Uh, I'd like to see those come back to the tribe, even if we aren't the ones displaying it, so. Uh, it would enhance, i- if that happened, it would. Enhance the city's relationship with the tribe. And it plays into my other comment and I'll open it up. I think some others had some, some questions or comments. You know, the uh, the parks, uh, Parks for Parks Organization, as you know. Is working on the age burn project. It's a public private project to rehabilitate. That structure. Part of the conversation. Uh, has been to include a section of that rehabilitated structure for the purpose of history preservation. So what a wonderful thing to be able to bring back, as we just talked about, perhaps some of these objects. And what I think should be on the work plan is also. Uh, coordination with Parks and Rec Advisory Board folks with regard to the Nisqually. Work plan, because we have three hundred thousand from the legislature that's going to go into this sort of collaborative. Uh, signage or interpretive work or culturally significant stuff that will portray the history of that area. Uh, from the quality perspective. And so it seems to me that your, your board should be working as part of the work plan. Uh, some integration with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with our Parks and Rec uh, staff. To take the next step on that and figure out what's significant, what's important. Uh, obviously listen to what the tribe has to say about what's significant and important from their perspective and see how we can collaborate and really make something. Pretty cool there at the H barn when it gets renovated. That would be a wonderful thing, a wonderful legacy. They'll have board uh, to do.
Yeah.
In my opinion. Sure. And then Mr. Brand Center.
Thank you. Uh, just a suggestion.
Oh, thanks, Beth. I'm terribly visually impaired. Uh, uh, the one thing about the Burke Museum, I have. Don't need to go into it. Some association with it over many years. And I think a suggestion would be if you can get your hands on or through something on their website. Um, an organizational chart of the institution of the Burke Museum. And there will be a, I'm sure, a director of collections or some such. And there are bound to be drop down little squares underneath that. That might have a person's name on it. And I would recommend that you go after, you know, some of the low hanging fruit first talk of. To get more information rather than starting at the director of collections.
Don't, don't we have a consultant that we pay periodically as part of the all have work? Don't we provide funds limited for a consultant to work with your organization? Well, in the past, we've funded a consult. Right. Why don't we figure out what it would take to engage Jennifer to do this work? As opposed to you guys trying to go through a hierarchy chart and figure it out. Why don't we just figure that out? And if it's two or three hours or four hours or five hours a time at thirty five bucks an hour, let's just get it done.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Ware. And, and again, I would encourage that. Trying to get, you know, the, the perk museum. To move away from their role as a hoarder. And, 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 and to, and to put things in, 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 in public view. You know, internationally, museums are. Once they have something are very slow to let go of it. I mean. The, uh, there's a museum in England that now after seventy years of work. Has finally returned a group of items to Sri Lanka that were. Absconded with during the colonial era going on. But that happened because of there was some persistence and someone that is working to do that. And I think uh, that uh. We as a city, okay, uh, you, you know, uh. Need to have that persistence in terms of, of working with those folks to be able to go and do that. And we're in a period of time when. Issues of equity and the recognition of, 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 of groups. And, and, and what has happened in their history is, 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 has greater importance. So I think that there are. Things that we can bring to bear that could where to do that and. Uh, it, it, it's not a couple of months of work. It's, 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 it's a, a, a period of time. To look to, to go and be able to do that. But I think it worked well. Initiated and, and to be furthered through. In a shorter term. The uh. I think we're within a year of getting an interim library. And uh, the, the, in, in your work plan, that wasn't mentioned about working with the. To get some allocation of space, whether it's space on a wall or, or something there. Uh, in that, that can. Be a place to do some of the things that are on your work plan, to be able to go and do that. And it is always important with things like that to make them. Live, I, I, and would ha- have some effort of changing, like we see in the city hall with, with art. The, the periodic changing and updating of things so that. People don't come to the city hall and say, well, I've seen all the art last year, so I don't know. Look at it this year. You, 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 you wanna make it. So that was going on, you know, and there, there was a brief time of when. There were some things like that in the lobby of the city hall, but they, they grew stagnant. They just became. It was just there and, and it was going on. And I think that that may be a. Thing that you can have some discussions, but that you might also interest the youth council in keeping that uh. Even, any, any evolving uh, way to help the public. See things about the history of Lakewood and, and of the, the area going back. Years and years and years, uh, to be able to go and do that. I occasionally get comments from people, both residents and visitors. About the historic street. Designation signs. And I guess that I will pass on two of them. One is that there's a great deal of interest and it generates. Some curiosity where there are a great series of signs that talk about the old Tacoma Speedway. There's a whole series of signs that go through, but it's not a linear. Historic street to be able to go and do that. And that uh, at, at, at one point in time, a family that was visiting here. Suggested to me that if at a couple of places. And I want to think they were like on Grapley Lake Drive and a hundred streets, okay, where both streets are designated. Uh, that, 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 that there may be a number of places where a supplemental sign that is somewhat like a map. Or s- something that would show, well, where did that? Speedway go? Cause it's hard to really tell from the signs, but it would be. Uh, something else would, could be informative about that. Uh, the other comment that I, and, and, and that, that I get a lot are the Bridgeport Way signs. Nobody, no, nobody speaks. When people mention them to me. It's never done favorably. It's always what the heck is there? The same pole has two signs, two different colors that say the same thing. What's historic about? A street that has the same name now that it had a while ago, to be able to go and do that. So I don't know whether those particular pieces of metal, the signs can be repurposed. And, you know, someone can redo them as some sort of cost thing, but um. Unlike the o- other streets that have the signs that, that, that are, that are informative to do that. That is just confusing and people describe them as clutter. So you may be in your evaluation of that program that maybe those signs should come down. Um, and, and, and as you look further for other places that historic streets can be designated. That, that would be a thought to do that. And uh. Uh, I, I think the uh. There is interest in the community, uh, in, in the history to do that. And as you mentioned, right now, we have a system that in order to be designated as a community landmark. The initiative come, has to come from the property owner. But I guess the question is, is that is there something on the list of incentives? That the city hasn't put in place, but could. That might help with encouraging property owners to want to do that. And I don't know what that would be. I don't have a suggestion for you, but I think that the. The, the council would at least listen to if there are suggestions of additional incentives other than what there already is. To a property owner to do that, to help you with your convincing. Of folks that, that, that they might want, 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 want to consider that. So uh. You've got a, you know, a multifaceted work to, to, to go on and I, you know, I uh. Certainly, I certainly, you know, encourage you to do that. I'm supportive of getting some consultant money to help you do the. The things that are. Quite frankly, just gonna have to be. Dig in and, 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 and work on it. That is uh. Beyond the level that you just expect a, a group of volunteers to do in, 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 in their time to be able to go and do that. And the, the other historical thing that I think that the city has and. Moved on is that we've acquired ownership of the old settler cemetery. We're in the process. Okay, we're, we're in the process. I guess I misunderstood the city manager there. But in terms of, you know, that's one of about four or five interactive cemeteries. Uh, that, 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 that exists in the city that go back to tied to different pieces of history. You know, the bird cemetery and the cemetery on the Western State Hospital and, and, and some others. That um, you know, you, certainly, including them on. To the extent that they're available to be noted on your touring map and whether there is. A way to leverage those cemeteries in helping tell a greater story about history.
If, if I could ask one question right now on that, uh, I haven't heard what was happening with the. With the log from the library.
So here's what's happening with the log. So the, as I understand it. Uh, the city through the city manager has offered the library system. Uh, a home for the log temporarily. Uh, so it's going to be moved at the library district's expense. Presumably to a location at Fort Stillicum Park within a barn, so it's stored out of the weather. And then the task has been handed, I believe, to the uh. Arts Committee to review as part of its work plan. Uh, a proposal for how the community can best observe, enjoy, revere the log. So that's what I understand to be the status of it.
That's one thing I've gotten a lot of questions on and. I still have one of the original write-ups on the history.
Oh, great. Well, make sure that that gets over to the Arts Commission. That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
That would be great. Any other questions or do folks have any other comments? And I'll open up to the other council members real quick. Historic technology.
I'd like to take a moment uh, to say something. I've been on El Hev for a long time. On my fiftieth birthday, a friend gave me a T-shirt that had a beautiful fir tree on it. And it said fifty isn't old if you're a tree. Well, next month I will celebrate my ninetieth birthday. And I think ninety's pretty darned old even for a tree. Um, and I'm, my friends don't know this yet, but I'm taking this opportunity to resign from the. Uh, landmark. Advisory Board and it's a decision that have not, I have not come to easily. Um, it's been a, a pleasure and an honor. Uh, to serve. I appreciate the councils. I don't know how long I've been on, but it seems like forever since I retired from. Working with young children and families, which has been one of my life's passion, to moving to. My, my community and uh. Considering my other passion is historic preservation and historic information. So it's been a wonderful journey for me to serve on this uh, advisory board. And I'm grateful to the council for renewing my application every three years. Or however often I have to fill that out. I am required to fill that out. It's been great. Um, and I'm so excited. Uh, it's difficult when I think about the Burke Museum potential and. Having items returned and your wonderful suggestions and willingness to put forth some dollars. To have some money of Jennifer's caliber to assist in a process of something like that. To return um. Artifacts to the community in which they belong. And I appreciate what you said, Mr. Manstead. About the equity issue uh, at this particular time. Uh, with regard to um, items that belong to the native community. And that's so, I just think that's so important and, and I also, your comment about museums being hoarders. Your darn rights, they are. They have dungeons. I have been in the Burke Museum dungeons myself. And it's an incredible place and all I could do was, and they pull is. Ooh and ah as I look at shelves of baskets that I know are from the native communities. And they pull out drawer after drawer after drawer of bird wings and bird heads and bird this and, you know. Everything from here. What's hidden underground at museums, I think. Uh, should really be brought to light and shared with communities. So any effort we can take. To pull some of that stuff out of the dungeon would be wonderful. But I'm, and I'm thrilled to hear about um. The tree projects that the city has done and our look at what be, what becomes a historic tree. I think it's great. I'm all for trees and uh. Have planted many, many in my fifty seven years living in Lakewood. Trees grow well here. And, but we need it for all the environmental reasons that you can consider, but I look at it. I look at them from the pure beauty of God's gift to us in nature. And the more that we can share that and have that in our community, I think it, it just. It makes us a better community. I'm glad to hear that the potential of maybe getting some youth involved. And I was thinking when you were talking about the library, that areas for historic. Um, information would be great, would be in the teen section or in the, in the younger kids. That's where you gather. That's, I have a grandson who's loved museums. He's grandma and we go to the museum, you know? That was just one of his favorite places to go. He was fascinated by learning and understanding that, so. That's a good one. But anyway, I'll just quit blabbing. I could talk forever and ever about being a part of this. Being a part of this great team with great people. And with the passion that that we all have for the history that has come before us. And I want to say It's with great gratitude that that I have been able to be a partner in this endeavor. Thank you so much. And I'll write my proper letter.
Well, thank you, Joan, for that.
I know you'll miss me, you know.
Incredible service. Thank you for your years of service on the committee and certainly You've done more than just this committee's work. You've been volunteering lots of things in Lakewood. So thank you for all of your time and service. Mr. Lawrence Allen, yes?
Yes, thank you for your for your service. It's amazing. I just had one go back on part of the 2023 work plan. You listed a number of sites We're trying to get community landmark designation for. Other members of the community and myself Identify with the big flashlight Lakewood Water Tower as a landmark of our community. So much so that last week when we had our business spotlight on the Lakewood Barber Shop, Their logo is the water tower with their barber shop thing on it. I'm wondering what it would take to get that considered on this same list of things to look at. I know it's currently property of Lakewood Water District. And in their plans, there may be plans to take that down and replace it. So getting ahead of that, I think, would be beneficial to the community.
Any other questions? I'll just kind of conclude with a couple of comments. Any other questions, Beth? Anything else?
Good. Just a little side note in regard to the Speedway. It is on the revised touring map. So if somebody stops in and gets a touring map, they'll be able to see where the whole Speedway goes. So it'll be a little bit less confusing. I'll know that it's not a straight line, but sort of a circle.
Yeah, just on the Speedway, just for a moment, and I'll not veer off track here, but one of the Proposed public art pieces, I don't know, three or four years ago Was a really cool bronze piece. You probably saw that, Glenn, where the guy did a little piece of the Speedway track and he had a racer on it. And it was very realistic as opposed to impressionistic. And for whatever reason, didn't get as many votes in the Arts Commission to bring the recommendation to us, but it may be something to take a look at again if you really get the The history around the Speedway going, there may be some movement to bring that gentleman's work back for consideration. Just running out there, but it was a really well-done piece. You remember that, don't you?
I do. Yes. Thank you, Mary. And I know that they're looking at doing some sort of Speedway Utility box wraps in that area that are Speedway themed. So I know that that's part of the process, but Your other piece is different, but I agree with the mayor.
Yeah, one more comment on that, too. I know the gentleman who does the Pretty Gritty Tours videos, he did a short video on the Speedway. It's a good resource to look at and having him help with a touring of Lakewood would be a great idea.
Mr. Boki. So I third the notion of, I really liked the little bronze statue. It wasn't big. So it probably wouldn't be wildly expensive nor hard To find a place to put it in. And it was really a neat piece. And I think it would be relatively something we could agree on relatively quickly, not fight about it for three years. But anyway. So I do think that's a good idea. The question would be, where would we put it so that a lot of people could see it? I always say the same thing every time I hear, you know, that the monies that helped get you a lot of the markers, the rocks Also got you the signs that that's out there every year. I don't know that we made an application this year for the county money to help you Go forward on any of these projects, but I wish you luck.
I did forget to mention, we have two markers that are In process right now. One is already installed out at the Woodbrook Hunt Club. And I still have to grout the bronze Because there's quite a gap in some areas with the rock. The other one is the Is the bird cemetery. And I was planning on using City right away at the edge of the road.
Probably a public works question you want to coordinate with, yeah.
Yeah. So that plaque is ready. However, I don't have a rock for it yet.
We can probably find a rock for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I've had to go to ordering each time. I get a couple of rocks and it's been put in my backyard and Sometimes you can't even get the rocks moved after they're
Well, we'll bubble that one up through the staff liaison With Elhad and I'm sure we can assist some way somehow with that.
Okay, then that'd be a great help because rocks are difficult to find nowadays.
Can I interject? Because I had my hand up some time ago and I don't want it to go too far without.
Sorry about that. Yep.
That's okay. It was just that Ms. Cooley was going to talk, so I put my hand, you know, I turned off the microphone. So I'm sorry I'm not with you there tonight. I'm not feeling very well, so I didn't want to give you my sore throat. But I just had a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, thanks to the mayor for updating us on the log, the Tensler log. And actually, it was something I was kind of worried about. And I think it's been brought up before, but that's actually, you know, it is a Major historical kind of landmark in Lakewood, so it's really important to protect it. And it's great it's going to go someplace where it's out of the weather, but I think really that's where you need the The advice of an expert consultant from Burke Museum. Because they know how to deal with historical chunks of wood, historical chunks of rock fossils or whatever. So I don't think that it's adequate to put it in an unheated barn. I think that those are unheated, right? Because it's probably like I've had chunks of wood in my garage and they've gotten moldy. Right? So we don't want that to happen to the big piece of log. So I would say that that would be like a priority before they touch that thing. You know, it's dangerous moving it, but then if we put it in the barn, even if it survives and then it gets all moldy, that's going to be really bad. The second thing is In terms of historic buildings in Lakewood, I had a question and Probably somebody could just answer it real quick. The Custer School was brought up in conversation recently. And I said, there must be some reason. It was before my time and, I mean, Not that I would have gone there, but I mean, before the Elheb, before my membership in Elheb. I was just wondering why that's not been taken care of. So maybe that's a question for some other time, or maybe somebody just has a quick answer. That would be great.
Good suggestion on the log and I'm going to chat a little bit about that at the end of the session. About what we may want to try to do on the consulting money. I don't know enough about the school issue As to whether or not and why not it has or hasn't been designated.
Thanks.
The proper name of the Little Red Schoolhouse at Custer. It's dates to the 30s or a little bit earlier. It's Almost a one-room schoolhouse. And it hasn't been maintained for a long time. There is a, it was on the National Register. I think the plaque is still inside on the wall. The school had planned to demolish it Rather than move it. It is a movable structure, I think, because it's not tall enough to To get into power lines and that sort of thing. But obviously you can't move them very far. And then it's a rehab situation because they haven't maintained it for some time and Between roof leaks and so forth, it gets really complicated in getting it restored. I would prefer to see it saved somehow. But then I believe that with almost every historic building in Lakewood, so I'm conflicted.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Curious about the Tacoma Gothic Country Club. There is a rock there. What is that representing?
Historic significance.
The historical rock by the Tacoma Gothic Country Club? Right, but on here, on consideration, you have the Tacoma Gothic Country Club, so it's like The club is not designated.
The structure.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Minetti?
Oh, no, I was just going to thank Mr. Spieth for answering. So it was on, it was on the National Register, but now it's not. I didn't know that that was Possible. Anyway, I'll try to get more details on the Little Red Schoolhouse later then. Thanks.
Certainly something the committee is on, kind of on their work plan. So the committee could certainly dig into that With the assistance of the consultant. And come up with a recommendation if that was the committee's desire to do so.
Yeah, it's been about 15 to 20 years since I've been in it, so.
Apparently, Mr. Buwer went there at one point in time.
Yeah, the Little Red Schoolhouse belongs to the Clover Park School District. It is in bad disrepair. We do not want to make improvements to it. There's a long history and we can bring that back at a future date.
Thanks, Mr. Buwer.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. And before we leave it, I was going to ask the city attorney just to confirm, confirm The status of the county's cemetery transfer to the city of Lakewood. It's pending, but hasn't been completed yet, correct?
Yes, and we will follow up on that.
Okay, okay. Make sure everyone knew it wasn't a fait accompli yet. And the second item that we heard tonight, and it looks like we have some consensus, I'm Going to ask Ms. Kraus to work with the committee and certainly the staff person for Parks To see if we can get a consulting contract release proposal. And if it might be a mid-year budget adjustment for a small amount of money. I don't want to leave the stone unturned because we want to get some momentum this year. Because I don't feel like we've had momentum on a couple of these items. And it's because We need some resources and attention put to it. And so I think you heard us loudly on that and see if we can come back and help the committee get the person Who can do the work and dig up the artifacts, so to speak, from Burke and figure out where we should go with that. Okay. Very good. In the absence of anything else, thank you again for your service, Joan. Thank you so much for your time with us. Really appreciated it. Thank you, Ms. Minetti, for showing up tonight on Zoom, even though you're not feeling well. We appreciate your service.
Thanks.
And have a great evening.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, it is eight o'clock and I'm going to give us a five-minute stretch break. Before we go to the next item, which is the economic and development update. And for that, we'll have Ms. Becky Newton. I don't know if she's here personally.
That came from the raceway.
Oh, it did. Fantastic.
That's very cool.
There should be a plaque to some extent.
I think I'm the only person who knows that anymore.
That would be a nice little thing to have, a little plaque or something there. Absolutely, yeah.
Works Director found the pieces of wood and we needed to do something for sound. So he came up with the idea of using the wood plus the ironing boards On the ceiling to help with the sound. And somewhere he found those pieces of wood and had them refurbished. So that's where they come from.
Beautifully done. Yeah, we need a little something on that. So we're going to be at recess just for a minute, for five minutes, and that'll give everybody a chance to stretch and then Hey, Ms. Newton.
Okay.
Welcome.
All ready?
We're ready.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and present the economic development update. It's been a while since we've done that. And just briefly, our primary focus, of course, has been on business retention and expansion, increasing outreach and assistance to our local businesses. Also, ramping up recruitment of new businesses, housing developers, and building on our marketing and outreach as well. A focus on target area development, as well as, in particularly, in the downtown area and our target areas for development. But the downtown Lakewood Station and Woodbrook have been some of our primary areas of focus as well as upgrading our housing stock. And keeping an eye on the population and demographics to kind of see how we're doing and how we're able to help them increase their cost or their standard of living, maintaining our voice regionally as well as at the state level and adding to and increasing our partnerships. So for business retention and expansion for the year of 2022 through quarter two of 2023, we did officially over 200 visits to our local businesses. And sometimes in partnership with Pierce County, as well as the Economic Development Board. Businesses do request, and their requests include more information and also more events and webinars and so forth on workforce, in particular finance, and also marketing, resources and checklists. We're in our development services manager and the team with development services are working hard to increase the checklist and public facing documents to help developers through that process. More communication as well as they like us to continue improvement of image of Lakewood signage, sidewalks come up frequently and increasing the walkability, which is happening and starting to happen due to council policies and priorities. Staff reports on the economic development page, we are continuing to populate with additional reports. The 2020, you can find the 2022 annual BRE report as well as quarter one and quarter two BRE reports. A number of other reports that we publish are permit reports, fact sheets, and economic indicators for the city of Lakewood. And our, one of my colleagues, Ted Thielen, is instrumental in completing those reports. We've added a bi-monthly newsletter with editorial columns with timely subjects such as climate change, tree code, and workforce. And our pages that we have on resources and incentives are continually updated based on the feedback that we receive from businesses here locally. And we do keep an eye on peer cities in terms of their incentives and offerings to see kind of how we line up. And also, we've recently added more information on importing and exporting due to our location here in Pierce County and increased our outreach to minority-owned businesses. Some of the other takeaways from our outreach to our businesses. Of course, we all know there has been industry disruptions due to the pandemic and rapidly changing technology. There continues to be some supply chain issues and cost of goods sold is increasing and depending on what those products are. There's also some issues with timing of production and getting products. So that does continue to be somewhat of an issue for many of our businesses. I wanted to mention that it appears that construction material costs have stabilized. However, it's still the highest construction rate we have ever seen. So it is challenging for developers. Workforce is a major challenge that most of the businesses do say they are continuing to struggle with. Wages are rising within the hotel industry, one of the hardest-hit industries during the pandemic. We have seen revenues come up. Occupancy is not as high as they forecasted. However, during the summer, however, as I mentioned, revenues are up, so that's positive. And also retail continues to trend upwards. Revenues, not necessarily employment. Small businesses in particularly are needing assistance with technology and technical challenges. There are a lot of changes in that area. Grants and loans, as you know, were critical to survival during the pandemic. And concern about vagrancy and homelessness and crime are a concern, but that obviously is not unique to Lakewood. It's really, it's across the state and particularly in cities. There is an increase in need for import and export assistance, as well as we do know that many of the business owners still have some concerns over health issues and COVID and other things. Traffic does come up as an issue for the future, and there is a concern about movement of product and people.
Before we switch slides, I just want to make a comment and ask a question. So coming out of the BRE visits, I'm really thankful to see that one of the suggestions is to offer the Small Business Starter Packet or Checklist. And where are you on that? Because that, in, for the benefit of the other council, I've got a little tiny, small business in Lakewood that I started. I assisted a veteran to start. And I can tell you, not a problem with where Lakewood was, but it's a challenge, even for a lawyer trying to help a small business owner. The morass of hoop jumping you have to go through, unless you really know and really are familiar with it, is really a lot. Simple little things you wouldn't think about. You know, you want to try to get your payroll done right, and you have to get certain application stuff with the Employment Security Department and with the Department of Revenue. But you can't necessarily do that until you have a business license. And if you're doing tenant improvements, even though you have space, you can't get the business license completed because you have to get the tenant improvements done before Lakewood will issue its stamp of approval to have a business license, even though you may have one with the state. So it's all these little hoops that the small business person for the unofficially know about. So having a checklist like that is really going to be helpful for people that will lead them through that process because it ain't easy, especially for the small folks that don't have the resources to have all the staff to do all that.
Absolutely. Mayor Wayland, thank you for that question. Yes, our development services manager, Jessica Olson, is working hard with the permit team to update that. And in terms of timing, as you know, obviously, we are a full-service city as well. So there's a lot of coordination. And so we're continually improving that in terms of timing for checklists.
Well. I know that Jessica is working on trying to improve the checklist process for small businesses, so that remains a work in progress. But we still have to deal with a couple of things with outside utilities that have a review process that we incorporate into our permitting process. Our level of customer service standard is not always the same as theirs. So that is a big issue. The other thing that I am concerned with is the new building codes that are coming up, October, November. That's going to change how things are done one more time. I'm not sure that we're going to have it on the council agenda come October. That might be delayed. I do know on the positive side, our building official, Mr. Gindi, is monitoring the energy code requirements. There seems to be desire to lessen them, so that should make it easier for people to do remodels and other tenant improvements. We're sensitive to it. I do know that we can make some improvements on that. And I guess I would like to basically come back with some more information.
Sure, and I'm not dictating or demanding any sort of schedule change on your end. I'm just saying it's a great idea coming out of the BREs. And anecdotally, from my own perspective, it's a really great idea. And so to the extent we can eventually get it to where you want it to be and have a section on the website, I'd like to start a new business in Lakewood and then just kind of lead you through that. And, you know, even when you get notice from the Department of Revenue that a an applicant has done at least the state portion, then it gets, you know, on the new integrated business licensing program where you checkmark that jurisdiction you're going to do business in. Once Lakewood's been checkmarked, then maybe that checklist eventually goes to that business.
I will tell you, that's the state system, and we're not necessarily happy with it because it has a lot to be desired. And they really, I'm not sure they really care about the city's requirements. All they want is their UBI number and their fees. And so that's a different customer service model.
It is a different, but they won't give you the DOR or the ESD or your workers' comp stuff until you get the business license issued. And you can't get the business license issued until Lakewood issues.
We never used to have that problem because the city of Lakewood would just issue the business license, and so we'd leave that up to them. So now they have coordinated it.
Got it.
So the other thing I would comment on the traffic, this is a big deal, but September of 2023, the NEPA process starts on the bridge improvements across Niskuale.
Oh, okay, that will be big.
That's a big one. And there's continuing work with city staff and WashDOT and the improvements of the the 512 corridor from Pualup all the way through the intersection. So those are things that this department, as well as public works are monitoring. I just wanted to point that out.
Great.
And I would just add that we, as a part of the economic development team, we are working with development services, and I agree that that we should have that more streamlined as a checklist for the economic development page as well.
Certainly, maybe something you can interface with Linda Smith at the chamber on to see if they have input as well from their perspective and what they're hearing.
We also take a number of.
Mr. Branson.
Yeah, you know, on this regard, I would say that I talked to a number of people that have either been starting or trying to expand businesses in Lakewood. And almost entirely, they have been complimentary about the help that they have gotten from the city's economic development and effort to be able to go and do that and the assistance in navigating. But a typical comment is I waited too long to ask for help. And so I lost a lot of time. And we sort of suffer somewhat because in the community people see potential businesses trying to start up. And it seems it's like the store, empty storefront issue. It seems like it's forever. And the default explanation in people's minds is the city must be slowing things down when it's some, it's somebody else. And so it's kind of an image problem that we have, not actually with the folks that communicate with us and work with us, but with the impression that's out there. So to, to the extent that we could get some success stories that particularly highlight how the city was important in a business moving to successfully achieve some goals. That helps us not only with the business community, but with the greater community as well in terms of emphasizing how business-friendly we actually are.
Kind of what we're doing with the business showcase work, but certainly we can always do more of that. Ms. Laura Sellen, then back to Ms. Newton.
Before we get off this page, I was just, I was looking at the the statements and your opportunities and concerns. Talk about some metrics about wages and costs and revenues all increasing. How does that compare with inflation? If we adjust for that, are we still increasing better than inflation or no?
So, say that again.
So we're stating that wages and costs and revenues are all increasing.
Yes.
We're currently in a time of high inflation. Are those numbers increasing more than inflation or are they adjusted for that or?
I believe they're adjusted for that. We're also, the other concern, one of the other concerns is that there's a potential for additional interest rate increases, as you know, to try to control some of the inflation that could happen.
Right. Okay, so but we're seeing growth that is real growth beyond just costing more.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
You're going to see a little bit more of that later in the presentation.
Okay, I just wanted to put this slide up as you all have been so generous in providing money for the BIPOC accelerator program with Pierce County, which has been very successful. We've had fifty-one Lakewood business owners graduate. And there are more actually going through another cohort now which will graduate. So that's just some statistics on those businesses. They have been able to raise capital, almost $800,000. Those that were able to raise capital were also eligible for additional $10,000 grants. And so rent reimbursement, coaching hours, ninety-four percent of those were minority-owned businesses.
I would also point out that some of the applicants here required some TLC. And I want to give a shout out to Becky for being patient, working with them and seeing them through the program. So, thank you.
Most of those are very micro businesses going through that program. Okay, jobs. Just, this is a snapshot of jobs in Lakewood and business operations. So total full-time jobs as compared to 2019, if you look on the column that says three years, we're about $300, 300 jobs down from the pre-pandemic. And then the two-year difference in employment is relative to approximately the low point of the pandemic. And then at the one year, it's just one year. How many jobs were increased during the prior one year? We are seeing some changes in jobs over time. While we have come close to, back to pre, pardon me, pre-pandemic, there's still a ways to go. And we're going to see some changes in the way healthcare is delivered, as you all know, in terms of technology as well as transportation and warehousing jobs. The source of this information is Workforce Central and Employment Security Department. We do, on the right-hand side there, just showing you a chart of, again, a snapshot in time of business operations. While we see some fluctuation in those numbers, they're relatively stable. And of course, the businesses coming in from outside to do work is dependent on the need for construction and other projects. Generally, as I mentioned, fairly stable. And we see, we'll be seeing some more additional outside businesses coming in, particularly as we see more construction projects for Western State Hospital, the mixed use and housing projects in particular.
Becky, before we move away from that, do you have an explanation of the kind of subset that's? kind of subset that's affected in transportation warehousing? Cause the experience during COVID is that s- sales tax from uh, remote internet purchases went up this year. And that requires distribution. Uh, McLean's out here, uh, everybody was still eating. So what do we, where do we lose transportation and warehousing jobs?
Yes, thank you, um, Councilmember Anderson. Part of that is due to um, changes in the way that the products are delivered and the technology. So whereas some of the um, technology is replacing some of the jobs. However, um, as and and also some of these numbers lag. So as you're seeing more businesses coming into Woodbrook, in particular, the industrial manufacturing, there's a lag in reporting of jobs. So we will see more of those transportation jobs probably in in future quarters.
Yeah, thank you. I could, could I just, I'm just trying to understand the chart. This, the, the three-year change in employment is wh- what's, what's that a change from? Is that a change from the employment column or is there another pre-pandemic employment column that I'm not seeing?
So the three-year essentially is showing us that we are still three hundred jobs down from where we were in twenty nineteen or pre-pandemic.
So the twenty nineteen number isn't on this chart?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the two-year change still goes back to the twenty nineteen number?
Yeah, representing um, the change in employment from the low point um, during the pandemic.
Okay, so, 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 so a negative.
Basically.
So employment is current employment. One-year change is the change from a year ago, but the two-year change is a change from someplace in twenty twenty?
The low, yes, cur- well, yes, uh, the low point of the pandemic.
And the three-year change is a change from sometime in twenty nineteen?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this chart just basically shows full-time and covered employment, which all full-time jobs that are covered by insurance and benefits in the city of Lakewood. And uh, just a couple of comments, um, we do have a lot of opportunity for growth in Lakewood, of course, with all the projects coming in. Construction, um, manufacturing with the changes in in what's happening with China and opportunities for us to increase manufacturing uh, back here in the United States. Uh, technology and innovation, healthcare, personal services and food services are some of the areas that we should see more growth here in the city of Lakewood. Okay, retail sales continues to trend up consistently um, for many years uh, through twenty nineteen. Of course, the pandemic did change things a bit. Um, we still saw increasing um, our capture of retail sales here in Lakewood. There was some flattening. Um, of course, there was stimulus checks that came out and then cash injected into the market. Um, and then held over from uh, there was fourteen million in retail sales tax in uh, twenty twenty-one and then approximately the same again in twenty twenty-two. But in general, retail sales tax has been trending upwards. And then we also like to look at retail leakage over time. We do have data through now through twenty twenty-one. Uh, most current and still increasing our capture of retail sales. There was a slight drop in food services in twenty twenty-one. But overall, up each year, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one. Okay, um, Mr. Beer asked what the red numbers represent. So if you look on, for each of the industry categories, a measurement of one means that we are meeting the needs of our population. Anything that's in red means that people have to go outside of Lakewood to get those items. So if it's over one, then we're capturing more here in Lakewood. Um, so we're having more people come in to get those items in Lakewood.
The main appliance dealer in Lakewood is Lowe's. Do we actually segregate their sales into appliances and building materials?
Um, Mr. Anderson, that's a good question. I'm not sure I know the answer to that, but I will. I note that. Thank you. Okay, so um, recruitment and attraction, uh, we do, are continuing our Build Your Better Here campaign. Uh, so marketing and continual improvements in perception and consistency is important for Lakewood. Um, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we focused uh, primarily on updating information on incentives and social media, uh, living and shopping in Lakewood. And then uh, for our current contract, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we've shifted to businesses and how they built their bus- they're better here. And so each one of these are um, each one of these four interviews are on that website. And if I, I'm sure if I I would like to play these for you because they're, they're, I'm not sure how to do that though. Let's see if I can, oops. Sorry. Brianna, not that one.
We wanted to play about Lakewood is you find your passion and you build your relationships with them. I am a triathlete and for me, being able to find other people to run with didn't take very long. And so I am running it on Saturday. We, we are, we are people here like we're always searching for that show business that I've sorted here and we want to. Even a tenth of a percent, maybe hundreds of dollars every year when you're buying. The wonderful thing about Lakewood is you find your passion and you build your relationships with them. I am a triathlete and for me, being able to find other people to run with didn't take very long. And so I am running it on Saturday. We, we are, we are people here like we're always searching for that show business that I've sorted here and we want.
Okay, so those are the four videos that we uh, currently have posted on the website uh, for Build Your Better Here. Um, we have done a couple of targeted print ads with Q R codes um, for Lakewood, but the, the end, through the end of the, the contract, we'll be focusing on social media. And as a reminder, our target audiences are young families, long-termers, builders and military. So, and then, yep, next slide. Um, so this is uh, just showing you for six quarters. The highest um, employ- employee employment for businesses that have sided in Lakewood. I just wanted to also note uh, that there's probably going to be a question, why is Aero Precision not on this list? And the reason why that is, is they have not built out their corporate headquarters yet in Lakewood. So there's still, some of the employees are still located in Tacoma. And so there's there's a little bit of leg time before that will be reported to to Lakewood. Um, so during this period, we also had uh, nine hundred and thirty-four new businesses, but there is also thirteen hundred or so businesses that closed. Um, we tried to do our best in showing depicting the closures and openings of businesses, but it's a little challenging because of how the Department of Revenue um, does the reporting. I just wanted to note also Aero Precision has grown from four hundred employees to a thousand employees in a, a couple of years. So well, some of them are still located in Tacoma.
Be- before you go, the question I get like over and over and over again is when is the New Mexican restaurant a hundredth one to open?
Um, Mayor Whalen, I also get that question quite often. Um, end of June, they received their, and it's not, not Lakewood.
Right.
End of June, they received their um, tenant improve, final tenant improvement permitting. So they can finalize their interior. We're still waiting for an opening date.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
They're hiring.
They're hiring. Yes, Ms. Moss.
Should be soon.
Bransitter. Looks beautiful, Mr. Uh, Deputy Mayor Moss and Mr. Branson.
Mr. Student, the um, the construction that was taking place on a, on a Lakewood Drive across from, across from H and L Produce beside the service station, what's happening with that? It's been sitting dormant, dormant for quite a while.
I will have to check. I'll have to double check.
Yeah, I do not know. We'll have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
We've had some issues with tenant improvements on the uh, H and L Produce site, not H and L. We've had uh, the building being used for uh, illegal occupancies on the on the second floor in the attics. So I know what we've been, this housing issue has kind of exploded and people are doing all kinds of things.
Yeah, it's a piece of heavy equipment.
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean. We'll find out.
Thank you.
With respect to new businesses opening and that have provided new employment, how does that, is that playing out in the central business district? Where we've got the, the, you know, the downtown area plan, it's now getting to be five years old and part of it was for growth in employment uh, in there and is and and despite the pandemic things, is this, is this chart indicate any momentum in the central business district with new businesses or or growth in employees?
Not this chart, but that information was provided as a part of the raise grant that was submitted uh, to the Department of the oh, to the, the feds just last year. And it does show the amount of activity as far as businesses and or permits and the level of activity, but that's not representative in this chart. Cause also too, this chart is like ten or more employees.
Okay, this chart represents a permit activity over five years, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. Our far five-year average being over a hundred and twenty-five million, which is significant for Lakewood and we should see that increasing particularly due to the housing planned. Um, as well as Western State Hospital in particular.
Yeah, we, Western State's about eight hundred million dollars. Uh, and that's over a five-year period.
And then getting into target area development, downtown is, is probably our top priority in terms of uh, looking at development for the area is uh, regional center. Are, one of our number one priorities is downtown park. Uh, we are looking at that and I will say that um, we've laid out a process for acquisition of park property. And uh, while uh, starting the process out, um, we are also looking at um, the next step in planning for amenities and park and with a focus, but the focus right now is on acquisition of property. Uh, we do have a four hundred plus unit uh, multi-family, five-story project on ten acres within the town center that is planned. That is planned. There is also a number of other residential projects throughout the downtown. We've been talking to a number of developers because we are looking at a tax increment financing increment area. And so we need to know kind of what of, what those projects are planned for the downtown. And some of the areas that we are particularly looking at are underutilized, such as the former QFC. And working with a couple of developers in particular, in potentially acquiring that property.
The, the tax increment financing piece will probably come back to the city council before the end of the year. There are some requirements that the city has to make before it can file its application by June of twenty twenty-four.
I was going to mention the Mexican Steakhouse and, and also we do have, we did have an submission for Buffalo Wild Wings, not the traditional large Buffalo Wild Wings. It's more of a pickup over by the UPS station, maybe with up to six seats in that area. And there are also a number of leases under negotiation within the town center at this time.
I'd also like to mention that we have a Daiso Japanese dollar store. So you haven't been there, you ought to go. It's a lot of fun. And it has a, a lot of kids go in there and, and their parents and so forth, but it's, it's quite unique. And I encourage you all to take a visit when you have time.
So there is a focus also on working with property owners to make sure that they continue to upkeep their properties. And we, we reach out to them particularly if they are doing a great job and beautification of the downtown. Just to let them know that we appreciate them. Safety is of course a big concern for retail. And so the police department is doing a great job in, in working on that. And just a little bit on the contamination, we did have four sites within the downtown that were contaminated. The Chevron sites, of course, cleaned up and that's where the interim library will be going. The former Ken's Tire Shop area has been cleaned up. They're waiting for their no further, further action designation. And the town center property is back on the voluntary cleanup program. And so they're working towards the no further action as well. There's a small area on the corner of Bridgeport and northeast corner of Bridgeport and Gravely. There's no development planned and really no activity at this time on that one. So, so the subareas, just wanted to mention, subareas are working to attract a lot of attack, attention and investment and opportunity. The TMF will be coming back to you for review as a part of the twenty twenty-four comp update, comp plan update. And we have, do, I do want to mention though, it's not widely known that we do have a host of incentives within, in our code to help with development, particularly for bonus development. If it, some of the projects include low income and a variety of other things. Next area is the Lakewood Station District, quickly highlighting a, a few of the key developments. On the other side of the Lakewood Station District, the, of the potential six hundred unit development on twelve acres. Devco has proceeded with two hundred and forty-five units. They will be proceeding. They're not under construction yet. All will be affordable at the sixty percent AMI level. The neighborhood fulfillment center, we, we've actually received quite a bit of data from them on, on what that's going to look like. We know that there's going to be three hundred and thirty direct jobs with an average annual wage of approximately eighty-four thousand dollars plus benefits.
That's double what the revenues were for the employees in the old building and other uses. And it also is a substantial increase in the number of employees. And on the Devco site is expected, the property will close in November. That's the old brickyard.
Yeah, that's, that's the aggregation of all that stuff that they've.
Yes, parts of it, yes, not all of it, but parts of it.
So it's over, you see where the pedestrian sound station is there? There's a little elevated walkway that goes over to the other road.
That's the station and the.
So are those little houses still going to remain going down the cul-de-sac for now?
For now. Um, the, the family did not own all of those, all of those little houses.
Was all the property to the south, right?
Yep. And the fulfillment center is going to be real interesting when people see what it's going to look like. The landscaping, the design of the project and everything else, it's a huge facelift for the pack highway area.
When do they plan on breaking ground with that?
They told me they planned on spending building permits this month.
That'd be great.
Beg your pardon?
Hundred and eleventh.
I believe that's a hundred and twelfth.
Kendrick. So. This is the area where we vacated a a block in the middle of this so that they could build this.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. What's the estimate of the construction costs on the fulfillment center? Do you have any idea?
No, I don't. It will also be based upon the type of, right, type of tenants that they're going to be accruing or going into under contract with. A lot of time has been spent on this site with security. Just wanted to let that be known and that's a big issue. And along pack highway and the commercial zones and one of the, you know, one of the things everyone's doing is building fences and gates. And electrified fencing is very, very hot right now and so to speak. And so it, it's, it seems to be working. Those who have them have not complained about any kind of problems. So you're going to see more of that kind of higher level of security than in, than in the past.
Okay, a couple of other projects just to highlight in the Lakewood Station District. Toto Town Homes, which has the approved M F T E, does currently include affordable units. And then Spring Hill Suites is actually outside, just outside of the Lakewood Station District. But I thought I would mention that because it is a significant project. It's all suite hotel. It's not extended stay. And then on to Woodbrook and just go through this quickly. We now have Amazon operating in Woodbrook as well as Eunice, Geodis, Damco, which is a part of the Maersk family of businesses, Yanmar, which is an ag equipment manufacturer, Schilling Toy Company. Of course, Olympic Moving and Storage has been there for a while, Sound Publishing, Packaging Exchange. And there's some additional trailer parking in there. And then we do have about two hundred and eighty thousand square feet planned, which is what's referred to as the Emerson Lake Business Park. And we expect them to potentially come in for permitting. They were going to come in this spring, but we haven't seen that as of yet.
Big land use issue is truck, excuse me.
I was just going to ask, do you know what the affordable cost is on the homes that are being built? On those, you said the, the sum would be affordable homes?
Oh, for the Toto homes? I don't off the top of my head, but I, we can certainly find out.
When they come in for their multifamily tax exemption application, you're going to see that information. But generally, right now it's two hundred dollars a square foot. That's what the construction costs are.
A lot of the construction for the projects that are coming into the downtown are upwards of four hundred, six hundred dollars a square foot. Yeah. Okay, and then approximately a thousand jobs operating within the Woodbrook Business Park at this time.
One thing I would point out is that truck trailer parking is a big issue right now in City of Lakewood. And it's a big issue in the Puget Sound because everyone wants more parking. And it doesn't make any money in theory for cities because all they're doing is just putting down asphalt and cutting vehicles. So it's, it's been a, a tough issue and we've had some appeals before the hearing examiner. This is before the planning commission currently and will be before the city council before the end of the year.
All right, International District. So of course the distribution center is operating, that's also Damco operating out of that at the corner of eighty-fourth and South Tacoma Way. Coleman Moving and Storage is fully operational. They, their primary focus is on military. And they, they're very happy to be here in Lakewood. And as you know, there's transportation improvements planned along that South Tacoma Way corridor, curb gutter sidewalk and lighting. And a number of new businesses has, have already cited along the South Tacoma Way corridor as well. I did want to mention that Bu Han plans a very significant project in the area. As you can see, there is sixty-eight thousand square foot of warehousing, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot of flex space, which could be a number of uses as well as a twelve thousand square foot office. Some of that, of course, will help to support the Bu Han market and other retailers and operations along South Tacoma Way.
Right now he's doing his due diligence on this, looking at past permits and looking at some of the engineering aspects of this project. But this project has sort of been in, on hold or under review for many years and now he's moving forward with it.
Yeah, is, is this project the one that includes the eventual improvements at Durango and Telecom?
That's going to be an issue that's going to come up with this project.
That's a separate signalization at Durango. And yes, that will come up, that will definitely come up as this project moves along.
And potentially on Ninety-Second Street in South Tacoma Way.
Right, Spring Brook, just meant, wanted to mention a couple of, of projects. So the same developer that developed the Wellstone Apartments is planning a sixty-seven unit. What they're calling annex apartments, which is actually four stories over one with kind of four and a half essentially. And then Lakewood One is an industrial project on a hundred and twenty-third street, which is being built by Panatoni. And then I just received information from Pierce County that there is a contract with the manufacturer for the gravel pit project, but we don't have information to share this evening because they have not submitted for permits yet, as of yet.
The Lakewood One site is the one that had all the trees on it. And they've had to repay up four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in our tree mitigation fee. So if you'd add that plus what the council set aside for tree mitigation under, I forgot the term, you have close to seven hundred thousand dollars, actually seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that pot right now.
Okay, so Telecom, as you know, there's a plan update for Telecom, potential increase in density. Habitat for Humanity is still building in the area and there has been some new businesses as well coming in. We did spend the last quarter focusing some of our business retention and expansion visits out in the telecom area. And then I just did want to mention that we have begun outreach to businesses in Lake City. There is some expansion planned with the Lake City Pub for another use. And there's a new Mexican restaurant out in that area. And then the plan really will be to see what the community wants and what other businesses would be a good fit for the area to not only support the community, but also those that come and visit the park. And then I, we just have to mention Western State Hospital because it's such a huge project, upwards of eight hundred million dollars in value. Three hundred and fifty net new beds, a five-year project, anticipated completion in twenty twenty-eight. And thousands of construction workers. So the economic impact of that is fairly significant for Lakewood, very significant.
And we're struggling with the permitting behind us right now and it's requiring a lot of coordination with D S H S and their contractors.
And then housing and community demographics. So this chart basically represents year-over-year changes in residential, single-family and condos. So sales price, number of listings, as well as closed sales is down, not surprising. Average list price is slightly up. Days on market, of course, has been significantly up. Our vacancy rate really actually has gone up. It's over five percent according to CoStar. And due to cost of housing. And while we had some spring, summer price declines overall, we're up three percent in price increases year-to-date. And because of the housing shortage of marketing demand, we anticipate prices to hold. And the volume is down about thirty-three percent. We do not see a market crash. And tightening, due to tightening credit, it's causing some project delays and some cancellations. Okay, middle market housing, you've probably seen this depiction before. We are seeing, of course, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. And then some of the new projects in the downtown are, are anticipated to include live work opportunities for residents as well. The challenge that we, you'll probably be looking at in the future is an right-of-way consideration, including potential curb gutter sidewalk. And what do we do with that in terms of parking and street parking? So in some of the more mature cities such as Berkeley, California, you'll see curb gutter sidewalk and you'll see street parking. So we'll need to figure out how council would like to deal with that going forward. Anything to add on that?
It's a big topic. You can have middle, missing middle housing, but you have to have the appropriate infrastructure in place. And if you take a mature city that does have middle missing housing, one of the things that spotlights is wide streets, curb gutter sidewalk and street trees, and it works. Well, most of the city doesn't have curb gutter and sidewalk and the streets are not built out. So how are we supposed to accommodate middle missing housing? It's a big question. It's coming back to the city council in twenty twenty-four. And my personal opinion is I think that you're going to be asking for some level of exemption from Department of Commerce. Because you're going to end up with a situation where the streets are going to be packed with cars or you're going to see people parking on gravel and dirt in front yards. And so there's a potential front luck of, of, a big change in your quality of life in your neighborhoods. So it's something that I'm, I'm concerned with and I'm sure the commission and council want to look at this very carefully.
And particularly if we're, and we're expected to increase density in some areas and increase, potentially increase ADUs. They have to have access and parking as well. We're almost there. Okay, J B L M, of course, we have to include this statewide economic impact of fifteen billion dollars. Also, I'd like to mention that we do anticipate another twenty-eight hundred service members assigned with their families by twenty twenty-five. Currently, there's a housing shortage as well as a great need for childcare. As we're talking to developers, we're making. As we're talking to developers, we're making them aware of that. So they're considering that when they are are looking at projects here in Lakewood. And there's also going to be a need for services and jobs to support those families. And this is just a sample to show you where our demographics are as compared comparing two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty two. We have a relatively younger population and getting a little bit younger, but also younger as compared to peer cities. Our daytime population has increased. We're holding with our foreign born populations, they're staying here. And Clover Park is holding at about eighty nine percent overall graduation rate. Let's see, the poverty rate is significant and lowering from over nineteen percent to approximately thirteen and a half percent. These demographics, by the way, do come through census data. And it just really shows that how the council programs and policies are really helping to support the community and also development. And we do have seen an increase in overall residential units and that also the median home value. And then city staff is working hard to help all people across the city increase the security, safety and standard of living. And then finally, just a a list of boards, commissions and working groups that our team is involved with. And Tacoma is leading, I wanted to let you know, a new technology and innovation cluster and of which Lakewood is a part of and has a voice in that we are not contributing and in financing, but we are in a way because we are contributing in kind and staff time to support that effort to create a technology and innovation cluster here in the South Sound. Upcoming events that actually should be October fifth, not eighth, is our manufacturing day. It's being led by the EDB, but there are several partners, including the city of Lakewood, one to five at the Clover Park Technical College Advanced Training Facility. There'll be student panels, manufacturers, tours of the facility and speakers on the future of manufacturing. And the fifth, October fifth, one to five. And then on October eighteenth, we partnered with Pierce County to bring a Business Thriving Together Business Resource Event, particularly for small businesses and entrepreneurs. That event will be eight thirty to twelve thirty at the McGavick Center. That'll include B two B networking, Business Accelerator, business graduates will be there and many resources mostly free with tables and including government agencies. There'll be a talk on business skills and optional workshops on branding and marketing, capital and loan readiness as well as government contracting. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Anderson. The Lakeview gravel pit has is in due diligence. It's progressed in due diligence. It looks like it's promising, but of course, it's not over till it's over. Personally been involved with working with Congresswoman Strickland's office or personally regarding trying to make some JBLM land that adjoins Lakewood available for green acre housing, potential for a thousand units. But there are all sorts of hurdles, but base has some interest in it. Big Army has some interest in it. Congressman Strickland has a lot of interest in it. Would take some of the pressure off us and help keep rents more reasonable in our community plus providing for retail trade. So it'd be just outside the North Fort, just adjoining the city of Lakewood, where our new new road project ends when you go out Washington to go toward DeBud still come road. And just maybe this is more of a Chamber of Commerce thing, but something happened this last weekend. Forever, as I'm sure you are, getting inquiries, you know, where do I go for this kind of food? What's your favorite? And there's so many hidden gems of these mom and pop businesses, especially restaurants and ethnic restaurants in Lakewood. And everybody has different tastes. Is there like a compilation without, you know, favoring a particular one? It's some way we can get the word out for these people. And for example, I had somebody from out of town come in and said, I want to bring sushi to your house. And so they Googled, where's the best sushi in Lakewood? Well, I I know that I've been to Tacoma Seashaw one before, so it's right there. Come to Tacoma Seashaw and they said, there's no sushi place here. They wander around the corner and find the big line inside Paldow World. And they'll correct you, this is better. They see the turnover. He says their inventory is turning over. There's better, there's a huge demand and it's so much cheaper than, you know, Trapper sushi. And so they're going back, but it's hard to find those things. And so I don't know what we can do for the moms and pops. We've done a lot with the with the accelerator, Business Accelerator Program. You see how much, how how we're overrepresented because of our participation in that. But if we can help them even further by, you know, getting a name on a easily an easily located reference somewhere, it'd be great.
I don't think most people in Lakewood know that we have a Peruvian restaurant on Bridgeport Way.
I've been there, it's great.
Ms. Bell has some thoughts on that.
I love quinoa. Something to do that I think would be really good, people go online, obviously, when they're looking for restaurants. Google a lot of stuff. If maybe our comms people could do some sort of, you know, eats in Lakewood or just different things like that that they could feature a quick social series. They're very quick, something they just go in and it creates great content for them. On top of that, it's where people look is on social. You know, a website is great for a list, but you definitely going to want to get on social and get your reels or your stories, something like that, and create a series so people know that Lakewood is putting out, you know, whatever you want to call it of Lakewood. Cuisines of Lakewood, eats of Lakewood, whatever.
Me with Bren and Derek, this looks like a Derek assignment here very soon.
It absolutely does. It does.
He could he could afford to sample for weeks and he'd be fine.
It's just, and it creates a lot of business, not, I mean, for the business itself, for the area. A lot of visibility is something that I personally, I've had really good results with.
We also have now two barbecue joints where most people.
Yeah, that New Jack's BBQ is quite good and Pete's is great too. Great. Any other questions? Otherwise, thank, oh, Mr. Laura.
All right, I'll try not to take too much time. I'm learning a lot about affordable housing because I'm new and I hadn't experienced all this before. We have multifamily tax exemptions for multifamily units that are being built, right? Do we have any sort of incentives for single family homes in the twelve hundred to eighteen hundred square foot range that are more affordable than our larger three thousand square foot mansions?
You have Habitat for Humanity. You also have another group out of Tacoma that's doing something very similar to Habitat. We have section eighteen eighty ninety within our municipal code that provides for a whole series of opportunities. That's going to be updated as a part of the two thousand and twenty four update. Multifamily tax exemption is only for apartments and is not for single family. So it's it's more of a challenge. You can use eighteen eighty ninety if you wanted to to propose a subdivision at a higher density and provide for affordable units. So those are some of the things that come up the top of my head. There will be another question at some point as we go through the two thousand and twenty four update because we, you know, Tiffany talks about having bands for housing. So what happens when we fill up one band? And these other bands have not been filled. Does that mean we close off a band and then focus on these other ones? So those are some of your bigger questions. I'm just giving you some ideas, some hints what to look for. I can probably give you a bigger list, that's what's coming to the top of my head right now.
Thank you, and I look forward to to learning more about that. And then on the development of warehousing space in Woodbrook and Spring Brook and those areas, how are we balancing that with our urban forestry and green space strategy?
If you take a look at the existing warehouses that have been built, you would be absolutely shocked by the number of trees that we are requiring in those projects. And a good example, the number of trees that are found in the warehouse project off of South Tacoma Way and across the street from Seshwan, Tacoma Seshwan, there's a warehouse there. I can't remember the name of the street, I think it's Ninety Fifth. But take a look at those trees, those have been more mature subdivision or warehouse. It's pretty impressive.
Cottage housing to answer.
Yeah, that's another option, but that's more on the higher side. We have never seen someone come in with cottage housing for affordable. The closest is a nine lot subdivision that Habitat has yet to start in Woodbrook, excuse me, in in Telecom. That kind of gets close to it. It's a very unique design. We gave them a whole series of opportunities to to build that. It's also too Lakewood is the land's not always available. And so we kind of have to make a lot of adjustments for things to work.
Sure.
There's a piece of property that's sold off Interlochen that is being developed into multiple lots. Do you know what size those units are going to be?
I do not recall the the size of those lots, but it's under appeal right now.
Very good, thank you for your good work and keeping everything moving forward with the business community. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
For the update, yeah. Hey folks, it's nine twenty two, let's take a stretch break and come back at nine thirty. And Ms. Kraus is going to present a beautiful overview that will probably not take us beyond ten. Lovely.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back.
Ms. Kraus, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I have two different versions. I can do the very abbreviated version and leave it for questions or I could do page by page.
I think you should read it page by page. No, but actually abbreviated would be preferable and then we can ask questions.
So I am going to look at page thirty of the packet.
Okay, let's get there.
And that is primarily the general and street fund. So overall, very abbreviated, revenues are slightly higher than two thousand and twenty two through the second quarter. So revenues are exceeding by one point five million when you compare it to the two thousand and twenty three budget. So the good news is while we're not quite above as high as two thousand and twenty two, our budgeting has helped us so that we're not, you know, overly optimistic. But the couple areas that are down is in the gambling tax and the fines and forfeitures for municipal court. So in areas where we're seeing revenues up, we just need to be careful because those increases will cover for the areas that are not quite doing as well. On the expenditure side, even though you're seeing that expenditures are down by one point seven million, keep in mind that we're only halfway through the year. And traditionally, we have seen savings on their operational side. Things are getting a bit tighter and that's something that I'll be looking closer at during the mid biennial review.
Our employee expenses continue to go up year after year. If revenues don't similarly go up, it's definitely a challenge.
Yes, and there's a lot, you know, city council goals that we want to be able to fulfill, but those cost money as well. And just shifting over to some of the other. Um, just shifting over to some of the other revenues on the transportation benefit district. So we have seen revenues coming in very well. Um, we're not quite as strong this year. Um, so we'll be back down to the probably eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in revenues. On the real estate excise tax, uh we did do a budget adjustment to increase the estimates and funded some of the capital projects. Still strong, but not quite as strong as the previous two years. On the cost recovery, uh targets for parks at forty-five percent. And through second quarter, it's at forty-six percent. And over the five-year period, we're at forty-seven percent. On development services, currently target eighty-five percent. Um, through second quarter, it's about seventy-eight percent and a five-year is ninety-eight percent. So that's what I have for my presentation. You've heard a lot, um, yes, too abbreviated.
Very abbreviated. There may be some.
Okay, I can keep going.
Any, well, what might be kind of interesting is, um, other than a little bit of increase in the general fund, it's 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 tight.
It's tight, yeah.
So what are the biggest concerns you've got looking? You know, you're pro, you know, you're looking out in the future. What do you think?
Well, I think that's the way we've been estimating is good. We're not overly optimistic, uh funding, not conservative, following financial policies. But um just I think moving forward, we'll be having to take a closer look at revenues and getting those up to make sure that, you know, you don't want to be too conservative, but not overly optimistic, especially when you're dedicating money and committing monies.
The gambling tax is hard to influence and and maybe socially, you don't necessarily want to, right? But what what is the consistent theme as you understand it from our court that fines and forfeitures now have decreased? A couple of years running. So what what's your perspective on that?
Well. My perspective is the actions that come from the court in terms of charging. Um, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge or any of that, but that's where the money comes in from. So if we have fines and infractions and they result in some type of fine, we'll get the monies. Um, but if there's no action from that standpoint, there's nothing that we're gonna see coming in.
Interesting. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I have, um I guess a a comment on that and it is a question, or are are we budgeting the downward trajectory that's anticipated with respect to fines and forfeitures? Because my honestly rather educated opinion on is it's never gonna recover. Uh, the misdemeanor charging is down and now all the defendant needs to do, and the crooks all know it, is file an affidavit that they can't pay and they judge can't impose a fine.
Yeah.
So the judges just they don't even question it anymore. They just say, okay, got the affidavit, sign off, you don't get fined.
That's been the trend for a while.
Yeah, and it's 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 not gonna go anywhere but down.
Yes, and it continues to go down and you'll see that and in the financials that were I did not account for all of the decreases as far as they should have been given where we are at this point.
And the other question I had is where are we uh on the uh the term of our labor contracts?
Oh, well, we have the, I I don't have it in this document. I have it in my bid biennium. Um, we have the APSME is the big one that we need to start negotiations on. I think their contract expires at the end of this year. Yeah, so that's the big one.
That's gonna be part of our biennial budget analysis, right?
Um, it'll be an announcement that we haven't taken that into consideration. So anything that results from it isn't added on. And that's typically how we um approach the budget.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Ms. Kraus? Mr. Bokey?
The real estate excise tax, and I have it on one thirteen of the total council packet. So we're okay because our budgeted figure was so low, but we're almost just half of last year.
Yeah.
And that's happening, you you know, in in a number of other, there's just not a lot of big deals out there, it looks like to me. How does how does that impact and remind us? It's all the capital. Is there debt service in there too? And what's our situation looking like?
It's um, it's some debt service that is being funded by that, and that is from the uh the transportation bonds that we issued. We did the three parts of the bonds. I wanna say that's off the top of my head. Uh, I think it's like one point two million or so in annual debt service payments. Yeah.
But, okay, so then going forward, this I don't know, I don't remember what the fund balance was in this fund in the REIT. So when we're when we're looking at that, taking that into account, we're okay for the rest of the biennial.
Yes, yes.
For our capital projects, just looking forward.
Looking forward. So the uh the debt service is about one point two million coming from the REIT source.
Okay.
You made mention of it uh in passing, but the significant construction work for Western State Hospitals, you know, create a little bit of a bump in any number of areas, whether it's retail sales tax from all the contractors buying materials or enjoying the fruits of our wonderful restaurants or whatever, right?
Yes.
And the construction permitting, you should see a nice bump in the next two or three years.
Yes, whenever we get those permits in.
And no property tax revenue because it's exempt.
We'll just take sales tax and then, I mean, the fees from the
Permits.
The permits will be.
Yeah, and then the, what the, what did they say in the number of employees?
Thousand.
Yeah, thousand. So those people and the business that they provide to the city will generate and the food, restaurants and such.
Absolutely, housing, you know, possibly hotels. Okay, well, very good. Well, thank you. Any other final questions from Ms. Kraus? Hope it didn't scare you into too short of a presentation, but thank you.
I could go page by page at the next one if you allow.
I'm well aware, yes. You do good work and thank you. Your team is fantastic in the level of detail and transparency for the benefit of our customers and citizens of residents of Lakewood, right? So thank you for the thoroughness and transparency of all the numbers.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, that concludes the items for discussion for tonight. Uh, we have the items listed there that are scheduled for the September eighteen regular council meeting. You can see on your sheet. And so now I'll just turn to Ms. Kraus for any other reports you may have.
Sure. So uh earlier today or later in the evening today, I had sent out an email from Sister Cities. We received information that one of our friendship cities has invited the city council um to participate in an event that they have that's scheduled in November second through the fourth. Um, we don't have a whole lot of
Second?
November second through the fourth, and it is, uh, I'm not gonna say this right, Dunhu, China. And yeah, so they're one of our um friendship cities. So some of the expenses, though we don't have the details of what they would pay for, um, but it's very likely that will incur other costs. We don't know about lodging. We didn't receive a whole lot of information. I did want to assure with you that it's currently not in the city council's budget.
Right.
But we have been requested to provide a response um to the city on whether we would like to participate. Um, so they can do their planning. So I'm just looking for some direction.
Mr. Anderson?
So I I participated in a a sister city visit with Dunzhou few years ago. Uh, it was rewarding. I think this may be even more interesting in some ways because it's outside. It's a more historic area. It's outside, not their city. It's in the mainland. It's by Shanghai. Money is an issue, of course. A bigger issue may be visas. Uh, a currently a Chinese visitor visa, they closed them for for uh COVID. I had, I was watching it because I was looking at going back on my own. I managed to get it ten-year visa. It's a strange story how that happened. You don't, you can't get those. It's about a two-month process now and can be delayed because of the demand. So what they did was they closed all the visas when they shut the country down. They opened them up slowly. First, they said, okay, if you have a ten-year visa, we'll let you come back in. And then they started reissuing one-year visas, and there's a pent-up demand. And so it takes there's a two-step process and it takes right now two months or more to get a Chinese visa, which takes you out to the middle of November. So it it may be one way to beg off. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in Orlando at an association defense communities meeting, but um, I I would consider paying my own way if if I wasn't doing that. But one way to beg off lightly is we're probably not capable of, we we can't plan because we don't know if we can get a visa in time.
Well, I have a visa because I was supposed to go a couple of years ago. So I've got it, but I don't know if it's still valid. So I just need to check it because I've got it plastered in my passport from the last time we were supposed to go, and then they canceled due to COVID, I think.
That the the issue is they usually do it in one or ten-year increments there. So it's how the most, most of those visas are only good for a year. Okay.
Yeah, so i- if we don't have a visa, then it's likely we're not gonna go.
Okay.
Uh, so, but I'll check and see if mine's active because I did it the last time to go and we didn't go.
Okay.
Um, it's possible I could do it, but I don't know if anybody else has a visa. No, okay. Yeah, I'll check on that for you and then we'll get a response back tomorrow for the next day.
All right, thank you. And then I'll just uh give you an update on some upcoming events. On September twenty-seventh, between five and six thirty is the volunteer recognition event at Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. On September twenty-seventh at six thirty PM, we have the Pierce County Council District Meeting. Um, DuPont City Council Chambers, that's the location, and the meeting will focus on transportation as it relates to District Six. And then September twenty-eighth at six PM, we have the Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. October fourteenth is the Truck and Tractor Day at Fort Silicon Park. November eleventh and twelfth, we have the Fall Community Cleanup between eight AM and two PM. And I'll stop there.
Very good. In case uh that went by rather quickly, I think our city clerk will probably make sure that those dates are all out on the calendar push. I think we have them, most all of them, right? Okay, just double, double check. Any questions of Ms. Kraus on all of those events? Great. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now we just turn to council comments. We're gonna make it before the clock strikes ten. Mr. Brandstetter.
Well, I'm I'm good, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Bokey.
Planning Commission last week, uh, a number of things that were discussed tonight. Were discussed at Planning Commission. They've got a number of items in front of them, dealing with the zoning of childcare facilities. Um, which is a uh kind of a statewide concern and the state has got involved in it. Um, I think they'll, they're gonna have some interesting discussions around it. We will be receiving these um, in the near future, some of these amendments. So um, another one had to do with electric fencing. Another did, dealt with permitting standalone truck parking in industrial areas that was mentioned. And then um there's also some discussion about ADUs and their ability to be used to short-term rentals. There's a hundred and forty-six short-term rentals in the city of Lakewood right now. And um it's a much more complicated discussion, I think, than I had ever thought of, right, about um, their place in in our community and their their place in the housing picture. And I'm, you know, and that's, I think, we're gonna have to spend, so I, all those of the four I highlighted are all things that have little nuances to them that I think we're gonna have to have some, a fair amount of discussion about. So, um, and I loved Fiesta de Familia. I loved the number of kids there. It was a really good kids event and um and I appreciated the visit by the consular official. And he stayed for a long time. Yeah. And the entertainment was good. So and I'm sure other folks will speak to that, so.
Very good. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just real quickly, I had a great time at the Fiesta de la Familia. And I also really enjoyed the mural uh that we were able to do the ribbon cutting on. That's fabulous. I look forward to seeing more of those, that type of art around the city. But I would just like to say, um, thank you to staff for the event. It was amazing. The diversity of the Latin culture was amazing and um I just really enjoyed it quite a bit. And I heard from other people from around the city and who, and people who actually came down for it. So I thought that that was very positive, just an amazing event. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also echo what Councilmember Bokey and Councilmembers Bell uh said about the Fiesta de la Familia. That was a a great event. I really enjoyed going to it. I missed it last year. Uh, and the mural is very nice. I like it. Um, and I know our our special guest also appreciated it. We've got, I think, two farmers markets left, so tomorrow and next week, I believe, are the last ones. So uh make sure get out to them if you haven't. And then uh Councilmember Bokey and I had a conversation with uh someone at the, at the festival regarding uh safety of our our streets and people racing on the streets. And we uh, we talked about uh another idea similar to uh uh Councilmember Anderson's idea of putting some speed bumps on the Anza Road. Uh, but it was uh looking at what if we were to put around about uh by the Red Robin here on gravelly. Uh, and then I also thought, what about, I know we've done a lot of work over there, but at a hundred and twelfth and gravelly, as we go around that corner, that may be another place to put some more speed control in. Uh, something to consider for our transportation department. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Anderson.
Oh, Saturday, the uh American Lake Veterans Golf Course had its annual uh nine eleven memorial tournament, uh, which is major, one of the major fundraisers for the year to help support that organization. Uh, the city manager and I, in our capacities of as board members, donated a foursome to our assist our Community Connector Brigade, the two-two. We had to get the gift uh okay by legal. That they determined eventually that uh we could uh sponsor the foursome as long as they were E-six or below. If they were higher, it would be an ethics violation. Uh, lawyers always get in the way, but it didn't get in the way too much because we had four very uh pleased Striker Brigade soldiers who came out and actually won the scramble, uh much to their surprise, took home some money and are great fans of the city of Lakewood.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I enjoyed the ceremony for the nine eleven that we had out here. Uh, Mayor did a good job on that. Uh, I just wish we could get more people to come out. Yeah, that's, this year, the crowd was even smaller than last year. So if I can figure out how we can get the word out on that. And I want to give a shout out to the youth council. They stepped up and supported the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition booth Saturday to allow me to go visit with the rest of the group. But they did an Omen's job. Uh, Alexandra, she was in the booth with me most of the time. I don't know what her last name was, but uh once she was there, her friends came. So I had a booth full of youth council members and they could speak Spanish. So that was really helpful for the people coming through. They were speaking Spanish, yeah. And it was interesting to watch the children interpret for the parents. So I saw that culture through a whole different lens during that process. It was great. And it was great meeting the the deputy count mayor, the deputy council mayor, council deputy mayor. That was fun. He was, he was, uh, the students made comments a lot too about, they appreciated the fact that he spoke Spanish and English to introduce himself and talk about what was happening in the in in New Mexico. So other than that, that's all I have.
Well, very good. Thank you. My accent must not have impressed them. I gave at least a Well, very good. Thank you. My accent must not have impressed them. I gave at least a sentence in Spanish. Thank you, thank you.
I had to look around and see if that was really you.
Right, exactly. So in addition to enjoying and attending the Fiesta de Familia, and again, kudos to staff. They really did a great job. And the members of the public that were there to a T really enjoyed it. I talked to a lot of folks wandering around and it was really well done, so, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for putting together a thank you letter to the Deputy Consul General there, Mr. Giza Vargas. We'll send this nice letter out thanking him for his participation. We had a chance to chat a little bit and he really wants to do more cultural connection and opportunities for all of us to kind of engage, and it's part of his mission as, as the consul general up there. So we talked a little bit about a sister city friendship relationship that might blossom into a sister city relationship. That might be a good thing. So we don't have one, I don't believe, with Mexico as yet. So more to follow on that, but it was a well-done event. Prior to that, this week, I was at the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center groundbreaking ceremony. I think that was on the eighth, and it was right before the nine eleven remembrance ceremony, so it was well-attended. They did a good job of commenting on how solid a partner Lakewood has been for the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center over the years. And it was nice to get a shout out for the city and its support of all that they have done and continue to do. So it was extremely well-attended. There was probably every particular politician and civic leader, you know, in Pierce County there. And all of them had to speak for, you know, at least three minutes, so it went on for a long time. And it gave me fourteen minutes to leave there and get here by noon for the nine eleven remembrance. So appreciate everyone who put that together. Again, it's wonderful to have. It would be well to see if we can increase attendance the next time. Tonight, I attended the Pierce Transit meeting. Before this meeting, nothing too exciting to say except that progress continues to move forward on what they call the Mobi, which is the facility here in Lakewood where they've expanded the operation of electric buses, including the electrification infrastructure for those buses. So it's good for Lakewood and certainly good for Pierce Transit. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to the staff who made the presentations happen tonight. They were very informative and well-done, very thorough, and we certainly appreciate the effort. So with that, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, the, the community collaboration hasn't, didn't meet in July and August, and they're scheduled to meet on this Wednesday morning. But when the schedule was put out as to which council member was supposed to go, it was listed as to be determined.
Ah, very good.
Because I think the schedule was put out before we had appointed Councilmember Laura Sella. Then that may have been the, the reason for that, that there was a placeholder. But there is a nine o'clock on this Wednesday community collaboration meeting that's at least scheduled. If we should identify, I'm not available to go to that.
Okay.
But if someone can.
Yeah, and it usually doesn't take a ton of time, a kind of a welcome and a hello, and usually the first presentation's kind of nice to sit on.
Yeah, it's, it's an hour. It's scheduled as an hour.
Yeah, yeah. So let us know and then we'll let the clerk know and then we'll make sure that whoever can go is on the schedule to make a presentation, say hello. Again, I don't say presentation in a big formal sense. It's more of a welcome and hello, yeah. Thank you. Anything else? All right, well, then we're adjourned. Thank you.